Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us tonight for the January 24th meeting of the New London Planning Board. I apologize for my voice, I'm just getting over a little cold, so I'll try to keep my mask on most of the time. But just while we get started here, a couple reminders. One, we are being recorded, that's something new that we're doing here, so just so everyone is aware.
I don't think we're being recorded.
Okay.
I don't think it's working.
Okay. In theory, we're being recorded, though we might not be. So now's your chance. And, let's see, what else? We'll do the minutes, and then we'll talk about anything that's not on the agenda. So, did everyone get a chance to take a look at the minutes from January 10? Were there any questions, concerns, edits? That anyone had? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from January 10?
I move to approve the minutes.
So moved, I mean, second?
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. One sec, folks, for some technical problems. We're just trying to get through a couple of technical things here, but also, if anybody, we had a little celebration earlier for Paul, but if anybody wants to grab a water or any snacks, please help yourself. Yeah, there's some cheesecake through that's quite good. And is there anybody in the audience who is here to talk about something that is not on our agenda? I think I know what everybody's here for, but just to double check. Okay, so we're gonna start then with Colby Sawyer. And for this, because we have several abutters on the board, I'm gonna ask David if you would sit in as a voting member for this. And then, Mary Ann, you're gonna be recused, correct? And then Emily, as well. Yep. And then Katie, as an employee. Yeah. So, you just killed the planning board.
The small one person we got.
Right. It'd be a lot easier, wouldn't it?
I don't know what happens in that scenario.
I know. Thanks, Karen.
All right. So, good evening, I'm Karen Bonwold, Vice President of Finance and Administration at Colby Sawyer. And unfortunately, President Stubner sends her condolences, she is under the weather. Took me many, many emails and some convincing to not have her come tonight, but I finally persuaded her to stay home. But that said, I am joined here this evening with Christiane Bouchard from HGA Associates, who's our architectural firm, and Will Davis from Horizons Engineering. So, I'm going to primarily let them do the bulk of the presentation. I know you've seen some of it before, so we can do as much as little, whatever you want, in any format you want, so. But basically, just as a quick overview, we're here tonight asking for a final planning board approval on the construction of the School of Nursing and Health Sciences building. And that's gonna be located on the former Reichhold building site, which is in the center of campus. The college has raised 100% of the estimated 16 million in costs for the building through generous donations from our supporters of the college. And included in this fundraising is support from 100% of the college's Board of Trustees. So, really active participation. This building is going to offer academic and social opportunities for all Colby Sawyer students, with access to modern study, conference, and classroom space, state-of-the-art simulation labs, and a small café that is centrally located on campus. We've spent the last 18 months researching the student needs and designing a space on campus that supports our partnership with Dartmouth Health, which is a partnership that focuses on increasing graduates that are dedicated to the health professions. So, as I mentioned, in the interest of time this evening, I'm going to stop there. I think you've all kinda heard through the community what this building is about. And I'm gonna quickly turn the presentation over to Christiane, and she's gonna walk through the building renderings first, and then we can go from there. Okay? Christiane?
Thanks, Karen.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Christiane Bouchard with HGA, like Karen mentioned. So, we have this presentation put together. I know some of you may have had a chance to look through this, so if you don't want us to get too much into detail, just let us know, we'll move along fast. And if you have questions, please just jump in and interrupt at any point. This first view that you're seeing in front -- yeah, that'd be good. This first view you're seeing, we were just trying to get everyone to understand, kind of the idea is to try to get the building to blend into the campus, so you can see -- can I point? If I can point, maybe? I don't know if I can point. Well, Adam is over the building, so you can see the cursor showing just the shape of the building as it will stand in its final location. And then if we go to the next plan, Will will get more into the details of the site plan design, but just architects, we like pretty pictures, so the, you know, the green is all the green space around it, and then the building will sit right across the walkway from the Hogan Sports Center, just to get everyone a sense of the scale. And then, we also wanted to show you what it will look like from the street. So, this is a street view, it's pretty camouflage, you can see that you will be able to see an end of the building as you drive by in front of campus. So, I think with that, I will hand it to Will, and he can describe all of our site design more in detail, unless there's questions.
Sure. Would you like me to walk through the site plan, or do you just wanna go into questions? Happy to do it either way.
Do you wanna just do like a, kind of a brief, like a short version, if you would, of the site plan?
Yeah, sure.
Just to refresh people's memory? Thanks.
Definitely. So, I think you're all pretty oriented to the existing sites. So, Adam, if you can just go to the proposed site plan. And I guess this thing may not -- there is a dot, there we go. Okay. If you can go to the next sheet, this is the existing conditions. It's taking a little bit, all right. We'll be patient. Yeah, now you're one sheet past, yeah. But so I can just start talking. So essentially, you know, the site is the existing Reichhold building site, the new building's a little bit longer and narrower, but I think it's a nice redevelopment project. You know, this is all an existing core of campus, a lot of existing impervious surfaces, and so, I think the team did a nice job of fitting it into this part of campus. Overall, it's a reduction in impervious surfaces, which is nice for the stormwater side of things. You know, we're introducing a little bit more green space than was there before, doing a reconfiguration of the parking lot a little bit, so you'll see on your site plan, there's -- can we go back to the other page, or are you froze, are you locked up, Adam? If you go up to the page before this. The darker pavement is basically representing where we're going to be saw cutting and replacing pavement, and then the lighter color here is an overlay. So essentially, the bulk of the parking lot is getting a shim and overlay, so kind of a maintenance of that existing parking area. It allows us to also restripe it, so that we'll have two-way circulation around the parking lot. Right now, there's some angled parking that only allows one-way traffic on one side of it. So also, you know, we're connecting into existing walkways, obviously, on all sides. One nice improvement here is we do have a widened walkway between Hogan and the new building, which is also gonna serve as a fire lane, so that'll be rated for vehicles, and so this building will have fire truck access on all four sides. As I mentioned before, we're reducing impervious, but we're also providing an underground chamber system that'll provide detention and a sand filter for treatment of the stormwater from the roof, as well as most of the walkway in front here. And that discharges into an existing drain manhole right there, near the front of the You know, water service will come from the west side, there's an existing 12-inch main here, we're gonna come off with a new 6-inch service into the building that'll provide fire suppression and domestic for water. And in the southeast corner is where the wastewater will come off into an existing manhole, right there. So that's kind of the brief overview of the site plan and the utility work that's gonna be done. I'd be happy to take any questions on that, or we can roll into landscaping plans and architecturals, if you'd like to get an overview of those.
I think if you can do the, kinda the same thing you did there, just a quick.
Okay.
I think 12 -- oh, yeah, that one actually, sorry, thank you. Let's do -- yeah, this is a good one. So this will show you an overview of the landscape of the site, so most of the -- let me see if I can get this to work, like Will did. How can I not do it? It works here. Just doesn't seem --
Followed.
Okay, there we go. So, most of the area around the building will be lawn, where we are planting some new trees, sticking to native trees, trying to be -- we've been talking to a professor at the college about what kind of species we should be looking at, and so we'll have some maples, some oaks, sticking to things that just would grow here naturally. And then, across the path where we're across Hogan, he was interested in introducing maybe some edibles like blueberry bushes and things like that, so that's the type of planting that you can expect to see there. We have one small area of hardscape that is ambitioned to be a place where students can come out and sort of extend their teaching into the site, so it's pretty small, it's concrete pavers, and again, some plantings around it. So, that's kind of the basis of the basic design of the landscape. Any questions on that? And then, the lighting, we are matching the traditional-looking lampposts around campus, so keeping that all around the site. I think after this, this shows the levels of light, but I don't know that we, when I get into that, we're sticking to about one-foot candle. That's an image of what the lights will look like, and then, yeah, we included some, again, architectural renderings on the look of the building. It's a brick building, asphalt shingle roof, trying to increase our glazing to give the occupants a lot of views and daylight. And then, we are working to have the second image, you can see solar panels, so we will have PVs on the roof to produce some of the energy that the building will use. I don't know if we actually mentioned this, but it's a building to house the nursing program and the health sciences, so it's two floors, or about 8,000 square feet of teaching spaces. And we can go over the plans briefly, the first floor, the big two spaces here are the heart of the health sciences, it's an anatomy and physiology teaching lab, and then off of that, you can see -- I'm really struggling with this. At the other half of the floor, it's really seen more as a commons for students, so Colby Sawyer is really interested in making sure that this is not just for nursing and health sciences students, so it will have spaces where everyone can come in and work and study and have a lot of flexible furniture. And then there's some offices for the programs. And then, when we go upstairs to the second floor, so the very top one is a partial mechanical top floor, and then the second floor will really simulate a hospital environment, so this is where the nursing students will do the bulk of their learning. We have a skills lab, which is based around hospital beds and teaching nursing students how to respond to patients. And then we have this suite of spaces that they call simulation suites, so there's a lot of AV components designed into the space to recreate hospital situations. So, I think that's roof plan, and then we just put in some images of what the interiors of the building will look like. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions? Yeah, please.
What's the projected nursing school enrollment over the next, say, five years from now, for this building to handle it?
So, there is a growth plan, and I don't wanna -- do you wanna speak to that?
So, right now, the college is in a position where we're growing programs in different areas. So, this particular building will cater more to our traditional undergraduate nursing students. We do have nursing programs that are at the master's level, and we're bringing in our first doctoral nursing program soon, but the use of this building will be our traditional nursing students. Right now, this year, we have 212 of our undergraduate students are nursing students, and then we have another accelerated nursing program that's on ground, and there's currently two cohorts running simultaneously. The first cohort was 24, and the second cohort is 30. So those are the bulk of the students in terms of nursing that are gonna be in this building. And the building can definitely handle this capacity, can handle more, and that's why we want other students to be studying and using the other space. But the trajectory for our Dartmouth-Hitchcock agreement is more in growing programs in other areas. We wanted to get to an enrollment of an incoming class of about 120 traditional nursing students, and we're closing in on that, we're probably a year away from that right now.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
So, for the board, I met with the department heads, none of them had anything new to share, they, we've just met with them for the variance hearing, so it was sort of a duplication of that effort supportive of the project. And then, I also got some response from the water precinct, which I've already shared with Karen, but just saying that there's obviously existing fire and domestic service here, if there's any change to that, then they'll need to work with the college, and that they would like to see the detailed utility plans, but other than that, nothing.
Great. So, do we have comments from the board? Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I notice it's three stories, is there a use for the attic, storage?
It's mechanical.
The top floor is, by code, not considered a story, so it's less than a third of the floor below, and that's where we're putting all of our mechanical equipment. So, no windows, no daylight into that floor, using it to house the mechanicals.
Other questions from the board? Okay, so then, from the public, is there anyone here who has a comment or question? Mary Ann? So, if you can come up to the mic, if you don't mind going first, and then maybe, Mary Ann? Thank you. Just state your name, please, for the record.
My name is Andy Schmidt, and I'm a budding property owner, I live at the end of the driveway to Hogan Center. I came here to speak largely in support of this project, so, but I wanted to share a couple of things with the board. First of all, when the other building was demolished, it was done very responsibly. The asbestos was properly abated, they did not make expressive dust, and any noise of construction was confined during business hours. They couldn't have done that job better. And I was on that site every day, 'cause I lived there, and I'd take a walk on the campus, I'd pay attention to what's going on, and if I'd have seen anything improper, I would assure I would have brought it to your attention. So congratulations on the demolition. The demolition was done right. So, I think we should expeditiously approve this project, so we can get a time we start in the spring. My concerns were traffic and drainage, and thinking about it, I don't think it will have a material effect on traffic. There's a little bit of flow of traffic around when classes start, but it's not generally a problem. The architects which are here tonight, the drainage probably is not a problem as it exists today. The properties on the other side of 114, one of which is mine, all have wet cellars and have to pump their basements, especially in the springtime. So, any increase in water flow off of that site would adversely affect the property owners. And if the architect, after I speak, if they could address that, that would assuage my concerns. There's enough drainage off of Route 114 that the shoulder and the edge of Squire's Lane rapidly erodes, and between myself and the town, we abate that, but trust me, in the springtime, it's, you think there's a river flowing down there, just from what water comes off of 114. So, any increase in water, surface water, that's directed in that direction would have an adverse effect. So, please address that for me, and let me say this, in closing, 'cause I don't wanna take a lot of your time. The college is the greatest financial and social asset we have in the county, and I wholeheartedly support this project. If the architect would address the drainage, then my smallest concern would go away, and I'm not worried about noise of construction, or trucks, or anything like that, 'cause it's not been a problem when I was there, and I don't imagine it'll be much of a problem in the future. In any event, that would be transitory. Thank you for your listening to me.
Thanks very much.
I'm still gonna have our engineer address the drainage, he's the expert.
Okay, yeah, so, one thing I mentioned earlier was that we're reducing impervious surfaces, so, you know, what's gonna cause the most runoff is those impervious surfaces, the asphalt and the roofs. And so, we're reducing those. The majority of this site actually runs in the other direction, towards Susan Swamp, in a variety of catch basins, et cetera. So, in addition to all of that, we're also providing a new detention system and treatment system for the stormwater that's coming off of most of these impervious surfaces, so we wouldn't have any, there won't be, there'll be a reduction in runoff from the site.
Thanks very much. Mary Ann, you had your hand up?
My name's Mary Ann McEnroe, I'm asking questions as a private citizen, not a member of the planning board. I'm wondering if you can tell me what the net difference is in your water usage? And you may have addressed it, but there's a lot of ambient noise, so I would like clarity on that. And the other thing is, could you inform us, please, of when you're gonna start and when you're gonna finish with the construction? And are you recruiting specifically for -- has your program increased year over year, after, over year, and what is your target enrollment for, make certain that building is utilized? Thank you.
So, thank you for your questions for the water. This actually came up the last time we were here, so we did a calculation on the water usage of Reichhold, and the way that we address this is how many people are in the building, that's how you do your expected calculation, and so Reichhold can sit 209 students. 209 students was the seating capacity of Reichhold. The new building, even though it's a little bit larger, because of the pedagogy and the way that classes are taught, is only 212 students, if it was completely full at once, so the water consumption will be very similar. I think, Karen, you can. The enrollment?
Yeah, Mary Ann, I know it was, enrollment was the last, and what was the second question?
Could you speak into the last?
Enrollment was your last question, what was the second question?
Construction time.
Oh, construction time, yep, okay, got it. So, our plan is, if we were to get approval this evening, and then we would move into the building permits, and we're planning for a May start on the construction, and they're saying about 16 months, maybe a little bit less for us to finish it, so maybe 14 months. It's all gonna depend on, as I'm sure this will be a shock, supply chain issues. So, but that is the schedule plan. We've got HP Cummings is gonna be doing the construction oversight, and they're very, very familiar with the area, they've done some work on campus already, and they've done several projects down at Procter Academy, too. In terms of enrollment, the undergraduate traditional nursing enrollment goal per our partnership is 120 incoming students per year, and we're almost there, we're at like 100.
So, per year, so are you over-recruiting in order to keep the 120?
I'm not sure what you mean by over-recruiting. I mean, we are heavily recruiting for nursing, definitely, and we are making our targets, but we're not turning people away, I'll put it to you that way. I mean, we are, we're going through the enrollment process, but we've been on a pretty steady course of where we wanna get to. I think it's been pretty timely, I don't think we're trying to, like, finish it quickly or anything. I don't know if that answers your question?
Well, my question, I guess, is based on some history that I have with the college, and that is that--
Mary Ann, you're not being recorded, 'cause you don't have a microphone. That was my thought.
My question is based probably on my experience with the college a number of years ago, that there was a tremendous outflow of students after the first year. There was a tremendous transfer rate, it was as much as 25% if my memory serves, and I'm wondering about what kind of transfer rate you're building into your recruitment? Are you over-recruiting or over-enrolling in order to accommodate that?
Yeah, so you're basically talking about our retention rate. So, our retention rate for first-year students that start in the fall and come back the following fall is around, I think this year was 73%. That is up during COVID, which was kind of an all-time low, probably at a lot of colleges, because a lot of students really struggled with online learning. So, we had dipped down probably to 68% at that point, but we have now built that back up, so it's not that we're over-enrolling at all. That is kind of traditional retention rates at an institution like Colby Sawyer. So, we build that into our financial model to make sure that we can run the institution on enrollment and retention rates that have been historic over the last 10 years. When we build our budget, we do a five-year average retention rate to make sure that we hit those numbers. So, for example, this spring now, we just did our spring retention, fall to spring, and we are nine students up from where we had projected. So, we are building our budgets on what our expectation for enrollment is, and we're right on the mark.
And so, what is, what's the transfer rate?
Hey, Mary Ann, sorry, but can you come back?
So, what did you say your retention rate was?
For fall to fall, it was 73% or 74% of the freshman class. 'Cause you only, we only mark the incoming class, that's how it works. And that's, that is up from where we've been, that's better than we've been the last couple of years.
So, what you're saying is that your nursing program is viable because you are basing your financial support for that program on your historical retention rates for the last five years, is that correct?
It's not, it's not isolated to nursing. We are building our budgets on all student retention, that's not nursing retention, that is all student retention for the incoming class. So, we're building our budgets based on a three-to-five-year history of what our retention rates are, and we're balancing that budget. We've had a balanced budget for six years now.
And is there a substantial difference between the overall student body retention rate and the nursing program? The reason why I'm asking is because you're, you know, I mean, as a planning board, we want it to succeed, and I wanna make certain that I'm satisfied as a private citizen, that it will. So, the difference between retention rate for all students versus your nursing program?
We personally don't break it down that way, we've never, we've never done that. We take the entire student body, year after year, we look at the retention rate, and we build in our average projection. We don't sit and say, okay, how many nursing stu-- we don't really do that. Now, internal to the nursing program, they might look at their over year-to-year, but when I build the financial budget for the college, I don't do that. I look at overall retention rates from all programs, and keep in mind, we're also growing all of these new programs. For example, I'll give you the accelerated bachelors in nursing, the new program that we have in. We started that cohort with 24, we graduated 22. So, highly, highly successful.
And what, over what time period?
It was a 16-month program. So, they were an accelerated program, there was a 16- It was a 16-month program. So, they were an accelerated program. There was a 16-month program. We started 24. We graduated 22. We just graduated them in December.
As RNs or?
They are bachelors of science and nursing.
BSc.
Yep, BSc. We now have the second cohort of 30, or I think we started at 26, came in in January this year. They'll be graduating in 16 months. They are technically an undergraduate program, but they act like graduate students, because they've already got a bachelor's degree. So, their retention rate is coming in higher than our traditional 18-year-old students who are just coming to college for the first time. So, now we're building the budget on a mix. So, now I take those accelerated students, and I'm like, okay, their retention rate's more like in the 90% range, versus our incoming first-year freshman 18-year-olds, it's more in the 75% range. So, I blend the budget to make sure that we're having retention that's consistent with programs, but not necessarily. Undergraduate nursing is a major within many majors. The accelerated bachelors is kind of like its own little program, if that helps.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, both.
So, unless anyone else has any questions, I'll give you the finding of facts. So, the first fact being that in order for the planning board to approve this, a variance was obtained on the height from the zoning board of adjustment on December 6. And so, that is completed. The building conforms to the approved use of the zoning ordinance in the college institutional zones. And then, the application complies with the Site Planner Review Regulations requirements for the parking and outdoor lighting and landscaping.
Great. Thanks, Adam. So, one last chance. Anyone from the public with questions, comments? Okay, thank you. And then, from the board, questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Colby Sawyer College Nurse, School for Nursing and Health and Sciences based on the findings of fact.
Okay, we had Paul, both Pauls seconded, so that was impressive. I'll give it to you, Paul. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, our waiver planning board members can return.
They look comfortable.
I know, right? Don't get used to sitting in the audience.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, welcome back to the planning board members. Thank you. All right, so now we're going to move on and talk about zoning. Adam's going to start to walk us through here.
Okay. So, reminder for folks tonight that this is our second and final public hearing, so we can't make the same level of changes that we made at the first one. And so, really can't make any substantive changes. So, tonight, it's more or less, are you satisfied with them? Are there any, you know, typos, that sort of thing, we can change. But if you're satisfied with them, then taking a vote as to whether or not to move them forward to town meeting. So, the first one here that we need to wrap up is the electric vehicle charging station, which I have up on the screen. I know you probably can't see it too well. But we made some minor modifications by capitalizing defined terms, and then also adding a definition for the actual station versus the facility. And we also modified the definition of the facility. So, are there any questions or comments from folks? Which one are you?
Who's asking my comments?
That one passed at the first one last week. So, that one's all tied up, so.
So, if there's not any public hearing, yep, board, public? Yeah, okay. So, anyone from the board have any questions, comments on that one? Yeah, Emily?
One quick question. Why is uses?
Sorry. Because, so, in zoning ordinances, when something is capitalized, there's a definition in our ordinance. So, that's the cue that we have a definition for uses.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good question. Any other comments from the board? And the public on this one? Questions, comments, concerns? Okay.
So, the motion would be to move forward to public, or not, no, we're at public hearing, to move forward to town meeting, sorry.
Exactly. I made the motion to move this to, move this forward to...
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
Second.
Second?
We don't have an absent full member, so...
Oh.
So, we have, right, Janet's the only one that's absent, which has to be a selectman.
Yep.
So, we need a full member.
Full member, so I need a full member for a second. Okay, thank you, Paul.
Are you ready to get him started?
Yep.
Yep, and then...
Okay, all in favor of moving this to town meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Better start than the last time. So, the next one we've got up are the modifications to the wetlands conservation overlay and the shoreland overlay, which thanks to John, we found a couple other things that needed to be capitalized that he helped me out with on that. So, we capitalized waterfront buffer and a couple of other spots, and then made the corrections to the official name for the Department of Agriculture and the Pest Control Board. We did receive a public comment from somebody that I know I sent to the board members, but just to relay it also to, I'm sure I should have had this queued up. Bear with me. He is a member of the Pleasant Lake Protective Association. I'm sorry about that. I thought I had this up. For some reason, his email's not in here. More or less, the issue was with knotweed around the lake, that he, as part of the Pleasant Lake Protective Association, has been nominated to administer some roundup use in order to inject it into the roots of knotweed. And I, his concern was that by requiring that it's somebody with a license, or permit, a special permit issued by the Division of Pesticide Control under the rules adopted by the Pesticide Control Board, that that would more or less make his activity through the Pleasant Lake Protective Association not allowed. So, he just wished to express those concerns. You know, I guess that's open for discussion. Let me see if I can just pull. But if there's not any discussion...
I had a comment outside of that.
Yep.
It suggests that we remove with natural ground cover. I guess that's a question as to whether that's a substantial change or not. Just, by, natural ground cover would actually prohibit the planting of woody bushes like blueberry bushes, or even a tree. It would seem that we're limiting ourselves in what we could approve for restoration and replanting unnecessarily. So, if we struck that, it would just say, restore it and replant it as approved by the planning board. I don't know if that's a substantive change or not, because we still have to approve it, but I just don't think we should limit ourselves.
And so, what's your suggestion exactly, Jeremy? Sorry, I was reading it. So, to...
Sorry, just strike with natural ground cover, and the rest of it would stay the same.
So, just say, shall be completely restored and replanted as approved by the planning board?
Correct. My assumption is, is that somebody that's coming to us is, coming to us with a planting plan or a replanting plan, and it's going to be natives. But with that, if we say that it's natural ground cover, then it needs to be native ground covers in lieu of things like blueberry bushes or even trees.
John, you're welcome to, yeah, jump in.
The ground cover is the definition, right? That's the definition within the zoning, right?
Let's see what...
Yes.
Yep.
Right.
Let's just redo it.
It defines what the national ground cover is, which is, I mean, you can see it on the, on the, well, it's not up now. I have it here, so.
So, as it reads, so, this may be a scenario where the industry standard of natural ground cover and the New London zoning ordinance just happen to not be the same thing, but it reads, "Any herbaceous plant or any woody seedling or shrub generally less than three feet in height. Natural ground covers shall also include naturally occurring leaf or needle litter, stumps, decaying wood debris, stones, boulders. Natural ground covers shall not include lawns, invasive species as listed by the New Hampshire Department of Agriculture, Market and Foods in accordance with RSA 450:533, exotic species as designated by the rule of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services in accordance with RSA yada, 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 imported organic stone mulch or other artificial materials." So, I mean, I think as defined in our ordinance, it works. Does, what do you think, Jeremy?
Yeah, I think it's just a difference between the state definition and our definition.
Right.
Because the state precludes woody shrubs from ground cover. So, they list, you know, ferns as a, as a ground cover, and then they list, like, a blueberry bush as a shrub. Ours is, our definition is actually merging the two. But it would preclude somebody from planting a tree, because trees aren't in there, because it says it's a shrub less than three feet in height. But I think just leave it alone, because our definition at least lets people plant...
More broadly.
Shrubs and blueberry bushes. And I can't imagine if somebody said they wanted to plant a tree in the woodland buffer, we'd say no, anyway. But, so, just, I'll just be quiet, leave it alone.
And there's nothing stopping somebody from planting a tree, period. Anyone can choose to plant a tree in their, their buffer. It could just be that it's part of the planting plan. You know, if they wanted to plant a tree over and above the ground, right?
Yep.
Adam, can I ask?
Thank you for that.
Another question? Going back to your, the comment from whoever it was from the Pleasant Lake?
Yep.
Because he, I mean, he's talking about applying pesticides. I believe the state law is, he has to have a license.
I believe you're correct. And I...
So, this doesn't, this is consistent with the law he would have to follow if he was doing it correctly?
Right.
How's that?
Right. And so, I think that it's a scenario where maybe a informal practice has been done in good faith, but has not necessarily abided by existing governance.
Right. And I think for most, just as, I think we talked about this the first time, or one of the meetings, is I, the goal for us is, after we had the Department of, the guy from Department of Agriculture, is most of the plants that we're looking at, we're going to smother.
Yep.
And so, it's going to be, cut them off at about a foot, put the bag on them, and in a year, they're gone. So, there'll be no, we're not planning on using any pesticides. And I think the knotweed could be done the same way, so.
Yep. Thanks, John. And thanks for all your help on this, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, John. Are there comments from the board on this? Questions?
So, we're leaving you?
I'm sorry. It's public hearing.
Yeah, so any questions from the public? Comments? Okay. So, what's the pleasure of the board in terms of this?
Ignoring my comment, I would make a motion to move this to town meeting.
So moved.
Second, you mean, right? Yeah. So, Mary Ann seconded. Yeah, she seconded. It's all right. She's taken over. It's all right. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Or abstain? Okay, thank you.
Now the main event. All right. Thank you, John.
Thanks very much for your help.
If you want to take a treat for the road for your help.
You've earned it.
All right. There are some fresh copies of the latest update. If anyone needs them, they're up here on the stage. That's wishful thinking, Jeremy. And what did I do with my copy that you and I looked at? Nope, it's right here. Okay. All right. So, since you were all here two weeks ago, I don't know if we necessarily have to go through the changes one by one, but we made those changes. Are there any existing unaddressed comments or concerns?
I had two typographical corrections that we reviewed. Do I just need to read them in, Adam?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, page 113, item seven, last sentence, it should say, "In support of such a waiver request in lieu of is." And then, from the redlined, the redlined version, sorry.
Trying to get it pulled up here.
Do you want me to do that again?
Yeah, we'll do that one more time.
So, page 113, item, I guess it's I-7, the last sentence that starts with "said financial outline," it should say, "in support of such a waiver request in lieu of is." And then, the next one is right after that, J., "We struck night number one, and we adjusted workforce housing to say, 'Any workforce housing projects with multifamily housing shall have direct access to a paved street.'" That should actually be number one. And then, it will renumber what is currently 1 through 9 on the next page into 2 through 10. And that was it. Other than that, very well done.
Yep, those are easy changes to make. Thank you for...
Good catch, Jeremy. So, are there, at long last, are there comments from the board on these changes that we've outlined here, and we talked about more than once?
I have a question.
Yeah.
What do we define a paved street to be?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Define a paved street? We're talking about asphalt or cement?
So, that would be regulated by our, we have street design standards in our subdivision regulations.
Okay.
And so, I mean, it gets incredibly specific as far as the substrate, and how deep it has to be, and thickness of the wear code, and all of that.
Thank you, Adam.
Yep.
Good question, Joe. Thanks. Are there comments or questions or concerns from the public? Concerns probably is not the one I was going to get, but anything else we should cover?
Anything else that you guys want to highlight, or?
The anticlimactic ending to "A Long Process." We appreciate all your, your hard work on. So, is there, well, let's see. Is there a motion from the board? What's your pleasure?
I move to bring this forward to town meeting.
Second.
Okay, so Jeremy moved, Mary Ann seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And anybody abstaining? Okay, great. Well, thank you all for your hard work. Congratulations.
Thank you for sitting through last week's three-hour meeting. Hopefully, this one was shorter.
And we have food, too.
Yeah.
Please help yourself on the way out.
The cheesecake is very, very... The cheesecake is very, very good. Put a plug in for... We should, we should have invited them. I didn't think... So, that's it. Other than...
We wanted to call.
Paul, yep.
And I thought of that, but he emailed me last time, and I missed it before the meeting, so we forgot.
Yep.
So, I haven't even talked to him about it, but I will find it out. We just want him to be...
Thank you very much.
Thanks for grabbing the mic.
Okay, so we're nearly done. Thanks to you all for making it through our last marathon meeting and this much more pleasant one. We just have one, I guess, two items of business left. We need to nominate a secretary, and Paul, under duress, has agreed to, to potentially do that, so. He's, right, exactly. So, we need a, we need a vote on that, because we realized that we were at, without that position. So, is there anyone who would like to make that nomination?
I would nominate Paul as secretary.
Do we need a second? I second it.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anyone abstention? Thank you, Paul, we appreciate it. Okay, and then the only other item of business on the agenda was our next meeting is...